The record reflects all board members are present, with exception of Amani who was late. Motion to go into executive session. The Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of: Number one, reviewing with attorney of Board of Education legal issues pertaining to Rockland Bosse's. Two, reviewing with Superintendent Schools his members of Board of Education dated October 2nd, 2018. Three, reviewing with Superintendent Schools his informal discussions with Suffolk Education Association concerning negotiations. Four, reviewing with Superintendent Schools vacancy in position of district clerk. Five, reviewing with Superintendent Schools status of vacancy in position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Six, reviewing with Superintendent Schools possible provision of human resources services by Rockland Bosse's. Seven, reviewing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education proposed memorandum of agreement with PSO concerning early retirement incentive for a member. Eight, reviewing with Superintendent Schools immediate need to fill just vacated volleyball coaching position. Nine, reviewing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education proposed memorandum of agreement with Suffolk Administrative Support Association pertaining to vacancy in position of employee benefits quota tightness. Ten, reviewing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to possible creation of Director of School Facilities position. Eleven, reviewing with Attorney of Board of Education legal issues pertaining to legislation concerning assessment of utility properties. Twelve, reviewing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to possible adding board member comment to policy 2350. Thirteen, reviewing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to communication from State Education Department pertaining to non-public school students. Finally, fourteen, reviewing with Attorney for Board of Education status of federal litigation concerning allegations of bullying. Motion? Mr. McKenzie, second.
Sir.
Ladies first. Melissa Rehm, please read them. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. This time, we, the Chair will recall the meeting of Suffolk Central School District back to order and we stand for the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible of the liberty and justice for all.
Hi, I'm Maddie McQuann, I'm a senior at Suffolk and I'm the student liaison to Board of Ed. Tomorrow night, on May 16th, this is Benin Heritage Night at RCC. Several students at Suffolk High School will be on right there. October 21st, on Sunday night, there will be community event. We have Ava Schloss coming to visit at Suffolk High School, she's a stepsister of Anne Frank. She'll be giving a presentation that's open to public. And then on Monday, so October 22nd, there will be student assemblies for Miss Schloss. And actually, the National History Honors Society has been giving a possum for students to decorate in order to make a frame for Miss Schloss to thank her for coming to us. On October 24th, Mark Pullman will be giving an assembly to ninth and 10th grade students about overcoming adversity. On October 25th is the Rotary Interacts Getting Dinner and those proceeds will go to the Rotary Scholarship, but also members of Suffolk High School Choir that will be staying and performing at the dinner. And on October 27th is the ACT exam at Suffolk High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that Maddie was chosen the Journal News Rockland Scholar-Athlete of the Week a month ago.
Great picture too, Journal News. We're all very proud of our athletes and non-athletes who are recognized throughout the year, especially our seniors, celebrate all your accomplishments, all of you included. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Collins?
I have a few comments to make, but we have a young lady here, Girl Scouts, that would like to address us, so I would share some of my time with her. And she's not the least bit embarrassed or anything. Oh, we have two?
Ladies.
Yay!
Please proceed. Can we just find here your name and what grade and what school you're in?
Hello, Suffolk Central School Board, I'm Emily Jett and I'm Alexis Robinson and we're from Group 40502, Girl Scouts. We just wanted to share with you today a little bit about our Bronze Award, which is what we're going to be talking about. Pretty much what we're doing is, we're trying to get rid of the Styrofoam trays at lunch because our first reason is, is schools all over the country in places such as New York City, Chicago, Miami, Dallas, and Orlando. They started using plastic trays in May 2012 and they were the great purchase. Generally, the disposable Styrofoam trays are about four cents a piece, but reusable plastic trays are about $4.99 a piece. The plastic trays are a little bit more expensive, but the school's money will not go to waste because the plastic trays are of, because the plastic trays have compartments to put milk inside also because, because they're easier to hold and, and there's more space to put food.
Words for me.
Another reason we should switch to plastic trays is that they're better for the environment. They're better for the environment because we can reuse them many years. Also, Styrofoam is bad for your health and plastic trays are better for your health and the environment because the chemicals in Styrofoam get stuck up in your food, but the human eye cannot see it happen. Did you know that Styrofoam trays are made of benzene and styrene? Also, kids scrape their trays when, with their sports and put it in their mouth, which causes them to ingest the chemicals. This is why our schools should switch to plastic trays. Thank you.
And what schools do you guys go to?
We go to Suffolk Middle School.
Suffolk Middle School. And we're getting out this information to Reed, I really appreciate you coming over tonight. Thank you for all the work you do to save the environment. Carry cow.
For letting me speak.
So update copies for everyone and give them out. Thank you.
Mayor Jett, slide. It's hard act to follow, but I do have a few comments. Maybe we'll get the slide popped up here. Everybody in the room knows that our district offers outstanding opportunities for our students and staff. And I'm so proud of the many ways we provide an excellent, well-rounded education for all of our Mounties. And it's exciting to see their accomplishments throughout the year. It's really the highlight of my day and my week is whenever I get into the buildings and see the kids working in the classrooms, playing music, participating in sports. It's really a highlight for me. But in the past week alone, fifth graders from Slutzburg Elementary School visited Jessica Minnick's ninth grade English class to help launch a project-based learning lesson. PBL is one of our areas of emphasis this year. It's on character development and fiction writing. And then more than 200 of our art students installed their fall project Pin Wheels for Peace on the front lawn of the high school. And then, of course, many of our elementary school students were visited by our local fire departments in honor of Fire Prevention Week. So you can just see a few pictures of our kids in action or of their displays. And as you also might know, we share many of these stories through the district's social media accounts, whether on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. And if you don't already, I would encourage you to find and follow these pages. Not only do we highlight amazing things from our classrooms and buildings, but we also use them to post official district business and information when necessary. Jenny, are you still in here?
Yep.
Did you stand up? She's our communications person, so. Down on the slide behind me, you can see that since the school year began, we've had, we posted 30 Facebook stories, tweeted 110 times, and published more than 50 times on Instagram. And today, we have 2,634 followers on Facebook, 1,503 on Twitter, and 1179 on Instagram. And if that's not enough, additionally, our seven schools also run Twitter accounts. The Middle and High School have Instagram accounts. And many of our teachers, many of our teachers, clubs, organizations, sports teams, they run their own Twitter and Instagram feeds. And I can be standing at a volleyball game, I can be standing at the softball game, and dynamically, that information is going out to followers and it's really a treat to see that happen. The district links are posted on this slide and you can visit the communications page of our website for building links. Jenny, just on behalf of the Board, thank you for all the communication efforts that you've put in and really helped us out over the last couple of years. And then for those of you that are in attendance and for Board members as well, next month, our principals will present their CSIS, Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. And it's where they take, it highlights basically the performance of our students and staff throughout the past year. And it's really amazing to see how successful our teachers are and how successful our students are. And then the principals, in a very collaborative way, drill down and try to figure out, okay, what can we do a little bit better? And I just reviewed the ACT report today and that's not the best predictor in the world, but if you look over time, the scores have continued to increase. And if you take a look at the AP exams, the scores continue to increase. It's really a testament to our staff and our wonderful students. But I would encourage you, if you can't make it to our next meeting, that when this goes out on YouTube, you'll see the secondary presentations on November 6th, and then on November 20th, you'll have the elementary. And then also, we'll be doing the Yale Emotional Intelligence presentation at the first meeting in November. So we have a lot going on. Maddie had mentioned the Sunday night community presentation at the high school. And then the kids, they have their assemblies 9:30 and 11:10 on Monday. And so if you have a chance to get out Sunday night, you know, I think it would be well worth your time to look at the presentation that we'll have at our high school. So there's just a few of the comments about what's going on in our wonderful schools.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. I'm just trying to verify, November 6th is the secondary schools, will be the middle and high school?
Yes.
So they're combined, okay. And elementary on the 12th?
The 20th.
The 20th. And that's all five elementaries together? So all principals will be here?
Yes.
Okay, great. We haven't done it that way in the past.
No, we've done two or three at a time, so we thought we'd do secondary at one time and elementary at the other time.
Okay, great. We're looking forward to that. And the Yale presentation, what's the date?
November 6th.
Together with the secondary?
Yes.
And for everyone interested in that, it's a course that our principals as well as teachers have been attending, but speeding in regarding emotional intelligence. And I attended a session for Board Education members and it was pretty enlightening, so I encourage everyone to attend and hear this. Thank you, Dr. Adams. And thanks, Jen, in case anyone's wondering why the Board looks ultra extra nifty today. Jen took a group picture of us wearing our stuff in blue proudly. So thank you, thank you for everything you do, we appreciate it. So. Okay, at this time, we will ask for the first segment of public participation on action items, agenda items only. Again, to remind everyone, we cannot discuss any items related to a specific student or staff member, and everybody's limited to three minutes in a total period of 30 minutes. If you would like to comment on any action items on this agenda, please come to the mic, introduce yourself with your name and your affiliation with Suffolk Central.
Hello, my name is Andrew Dell, I have two children in the school district, and unfortunately, it's not the first time I've been up here. I had a question about 2.05, reference to Bosse's classroom lease agreements. My concern was if our agreement was actually reviewed by legal counsel for that school district. And I'm assuming that Bosse's probably also did the same and reviewed it on their side. But once again, we have conflict of interest, which was brought up at the last meeting where we voted on $15 million contract again with Bosse's. And once again, there's no issue with Bosse's. Bosse's provides wonderful, great services for our school district. The question is that, you know, it looks like we share the same counsel and having counsel on both sides of the agreement is outrageous. 2.06, once again, I guess, want to make sure that our counsel also had an opportunity to review that and also disclose what his affiliation was with that organization to you guys at the same time. Outside of that, it doesn't seem to matter because we each have the same questions over and over again about conflicts, about who's actually reviewing this stuff and as a taxpayer and as a parent and as the teachers in the school district and everybody else, I just think, you know, if there is a conflict, then we need to address it and it needs to be reviewed by somebody other than the person who's also sitting on the other side of the table. Because when there's an issue, they can't sit down with themselves and work it out. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Any other comments? Seeing that, any? Seeing that there are no further comments, we will close this segment of the agenda and we will move to asking for a motion to adopt minutes of October 2nd, 2018. Anybody? Okay, Ms. Reemer moved and second, Mr. McKenzie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstains? None. Any nays? None. So the minutes of October 2nd have been adopted. Thank you very much for a great job. Appreciate you. Okay, moving to action items. We need to ask for members who wish to pull any items to please speak now.
2.02.
2.02, okay. Any others? Okay. I will pull 2.16 as I need to, I've been advised I need to just slightly alter the wording on that one, so pulling up 2.16, which is the policy manual. Anything else? Okay, so before we move to vote on the additional items, with exception of 2.02 and 2.16, Dr. Adams asked that we allow Ms. Weber to speak behalf of a tenure that is being presented today, unlike the usual May time when we tenure our teachers, and she can explain a bit to that.
So it's my pleasure to recommend to the superintendent, to recommend to you, the tenure for Carolyn Skowly, who, because she was hired in October, has her tenure date in October. She's a wonderful addition to the middle school, a wonderful, caring, kind, competent special education teacher, works really hard to meet the needs of her students and recognizes their various needs. So Carolyn will be included in the big celebration in April, but I wanted to congratulate her this evening.
So congratulations, and we usually have an amazing reception to our tenured staff and administrators in May, so we'll be sure to acknowledge you and congratulate you one more time. Thank you for everything you do. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all items from 2.01 to 2.16, with the exception of 2.02 and 2.16. Motion? Mr. Kern, second.
Second.
Mr. Shapiro. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? None. Any abstains? None. Thank you. Item 2.02, Professional Personnel Report Addendum. Any discussion? No discussion. We need a motion to adopt 2.02.
So moved.
Mr. Shapiro, second. Mrs. Reemer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstains?
Abstained.
Mr. Kern abstained. Nays? None. Motion adopted. One abstain. Item 2.16 is an item on the policy manual. The policy is attached with the corrections recommended by the Policy Committee and Administration. We will need to just alter the wording slightly to reflect the Board waiving its second reading right, which is reflected in current policy. So the Chair will entertain a motion. First of all, I will make the motion and then I will ask if there's any discussion. The Chair will entertain a motion that the Board of Education, in compliance with Board Policy Number 2410, pertaining to the formulation, adoption, and amendment of policies, hereby waives the second reading and adopts policy number 0110 as presented. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just to explain what's happening, the Board Policy 2410, Mr. Kern, would you like to just state what the policy requires and what we're doing?
Well, generally, the policy requires the first and second reading of any policies or amendments to policies that we're going to make. However, there is a provision in the policy that allows for us to approve a policy at the first reading and waive the second reading if a majority of the Board is in agreement with that.
Thank you very much for explaining that, and the majority of the Board is in agreement to waive the second reading in this particular circumstance in order to be compliant with legislature that has been shared with school districts. So to be in compliance, yes.
Is this working? Oh, good, thank you. I just had a problem with how the, this item got onto the agenda. It was placed on the agenda yesterday when the meeting was today. And usually, I wouldn't pass a resolution with no, you know, time to soak everything in. But in the era of the Me Too movement, I think it's very important that we have this sexual harassment policy to be covered and be within the state mandate for it. So that's why I would vote for it. But it doesn't change my feeling about adding things onto an agenda for the public and for the Board members, especially the Board members, sorry. But I have to vote on it and not having time to digest the information is something that just, I can't vote on things that way. This I will vote on for a specific reason.
Thank you. Any additional comments? And the Board did discuss that voting on a policy this evening does not prohibit further review at any edits in the future. So I want to make sure this is clear to everyone. We could always redesign any policy, whether this one or others, at any time, should the need come up. So at this time, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? None. Any abstains? None. Unanimous, thank you. Thank you for that. Information items, overview of items. We're gonna stay here.
Good. Okay, so, for my little presentation, it's a card, don't worry. So we were contacted by the State of New York. There we are. We were contacted by the State of New York on September 26th that they were going to come in and do a state audit. This will be, they do it about every five years, this is my, oh, my fourth audit here with them. So the audit will focus this year on internal controls. And for those of you who are not accountants, internal controls is just how we segregate our duties, make sure that there's no, the priorities is separate jobs for different people, that's part of it, to make sure that there's no conflict of interest for anybody and else. Let's take a good look at that. The audit period will be last fiscal year and whenever they come in this fiscal year until that date comes. So far, and we did this within the week that they asked for it, we electronically provided them all this information, cash disbursements, they want to see our vendors, our payroll activities, our employee master listing, cash receipts, customer list, and all our ERS and TRS reports, which is employee retirement and teacher retirement. This is some of the additional information they've asked for. This is something that we need to be ready when they come and pretty much we are. There's a couple of things that obviously they want the most recent of some reports and we'll wait till we know when they're coming in before we start providing that. But most of this information, we've been working to get together or have it available for them. And this is pretty standard, standard. The ST3, in case anybody wants to know, is the state report at the end of the year. We do 100-page report for the state online now, it's going to be a little harder, and shows all our expenditures, our budgets, our expenditures from the prior year, and asks for information regarding all different students or populations. There's a lot of financial information, but there's other information as well. The audit timing will be that they will review the electronic information we sent to them, now we just send it to them a week or so ago. Once they review all that, they could, they'll call us up and set a date that they'll come in. We'll have an entrance conference, they'll do the audit, and then we'll have an exit conference, now tell us what they found. The audit could take weeks, months, and Bosse's, two years. So in the accounting area, financial area on the third floor, we've been, every year, we have an internal audit. This year, they focused on extra classroom, the Board, the previous Board approved that. We have an external audit, which was just completed yesterday, and we just got the paperwork when we send it to you shortly, we uploaded that to the state. And also, every week, we have a claims auditor that goes through every single check that goes out of this district to make sure all the proper paperwork and everything's correct with it. And in our case, because we're still trying to move our extra class, and which is why we asked for the extra classes, we looked at this year by the internal audit, we also have to look at every dispersment for the extra class activities, which I find is good and helps the extra class trainer so that we get the teachers and students to do what we're supposed to do. Now this year, we tied this state audit, which will be very cumbersome. We were very lucky to find out that we're going to have a federal audit of our IDA, which is part of our grants, our 611, 619, so that's our special aid grants. And also, we're going to have a school lunch audit in December, and they're going to come in and make sure that we're doing everything proper and make sure that we're claiming our state aid correctly, the same thing they'll do at the federal audit. And just so you know, besides getting in data, which I've never seen, I mean, there's no one else who can do it. one else who got us, I don't think, three audits at one time, and basically it is, we are down two and a half people in the accounting area. We don't really have a very big area. So luckily, we have people that really help each other, and working tremendous amount of hours to try and get a bunch done, and I'm very grateful for an amazing team up there, because it's a lot of hard work and a lot of detail, and we pride ourselves on doing the things right. Any questions?
I hope it's gonna be very busy in your department.
It's very, very busy, yes, and it's only gonna get worse. Hopefully, we'll get some of our people back over the next few months, but we're keeping working a lot of extra hours.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No questions from the Audit Committee? Okay, thank you for that report. Okay, second report is the Rockland County School Boards Association Report, given by myself, as I am the delegate to the Rockland County School Board. I attended a meeting last night, so my last-minute report is that the Rockland County School Boards Association met last night at the NAIC BOCSs. Preceding the meeting, for about an hour and a half, Belinda Heckler with NISBA, she's the Government Relations Representative, reviewed the resolutions that are going to be acted on at the NISBA Convention on October the 27th. And what I'm going to do is ask all Board members to please review this packet that you received from NISBA directly by email. It's an electronic packet. If anybody did not receive it, please ask for it, and I'll forward your link. Because as a Board, we collectively need to form an opinion, how we wish to vote on each item that's going to be resolved at convention. So even though the Board has delegated myself to be the voting member, we all have to agree on how that voting member is going to vote, right? It's not my vote, it's all our vote collectively. So they reviewed resolution by resolution last night, giving more information. It's kind of a consensus. I'm happy to also give you any feedback that I heard last night to help you. So please reach out to me regarding any one of the resolutions that you may have an issue with. We can probably schedule like a quick phone call to answer any questions, but I need your feedback before next Saturday, when we're going to actually be required to vote. The second part of the meeting was the business meeting for the Rockland County School Boards, and in that meeting, actually, there were two guest speakers who represent an organization called, I can't remember very well. My apologies. They're called Ostroff, O-S-T-R-O-F-F, Associates, and they are a lobbying organization hired by the Lower Hudson Education Coalition. Rockland County School Boards are all part of the Coalition. They also represent Westchester, Potomac, and Dutchess County School Boards, representing us mostly in advocacy issues, speaking with one voice collectively. So it was important to hear what topics and what important bills they're working on. There's always a go-back with the liaison with the Executive Director for the Rockland County School Board, who pretty much relays information from them to our school boards and the other way. It gave me an opportunity to actually share an important bill that we've been discussing that has to do with the utility land, utility property assessments, a resolution that was passed a few minutes ago by the School Board today. I'm going to share that pretty quickly, and I will be forwarding this resolution from us on behalf of our Suffolk Central School Board to the rest of the Rockland County School Boards, so that the advocacy effort can be done collaboratively to try to get more information on this. So the resolution we passed today reads as follows: Whereas utility property located in private rights of way is currently assessed by the local municipality where such property is located, and whereas legislation has been enacted directing the Commissioner of Taxation and Finance to submit a report analyzing the economic policy and legal objectives that would be served by the establishment of an assessment ceiling program for all public utility mass property within the state, and whereas establishment of such a program would result in a New York State takeover of the assessment of utility program located in private rights of way, and whereas such property would result in the loss of local assessment of utility property in private rights of way, as well as possible loss of tax revenue to the Suffolk Central School District, as well as other school districts due to such a program not adequately reflecting the value of such property. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Suffolk Central School District that the assessment of utility property in private rights of way should remain under the control of the local municipality where such property is located and is hereby opposed to the New York State takeover of the assessment of the utility property located in private rights of way, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all the legislators in our area, our Assembly Members, the Governor's Office, our Senators, et cetera. So this is attached to today's agenda for those who want to review it, and advocacy of all community members will be definitely needed at this time to start to advocate that assessments continue to take place locally by local assessors who are familiar with our communities, and also to avoid a ceiling on the assessments of these utility parcels. So this is the end of my report. And next, we have a discussion item regarding Director of Facilities. So to introduce the Director of Facilities discussion, we have been, we tabled this item from a past agenda. The Board has been discussing personnel-related matters as adequately the right place to discuss personnel-related matters in our executive sessions, but we felt collectively that a discussion regarding bringing back the position of Director of Facilities to our district is a matter of public interest and should occur in public. So without going into at all individual names of who does what, we would like to have this discussion that we tabled from the last meeting. So I'm gonna go around twice for everyone to say what they feel we should do about this. Mr. Kern?
My, my initial instinct is to revive this position. Certainly, there are things we need to discuss that we either can't discuss here or are simply not in a position to discuss yet. I do feel, though, that a position such as Director of Facilities, given all of the projects that go on in our district, and everything that would fall under their jurisdiction, that somebody really heading up that department focused specifically on the facilities would probably be in the best interest of the district. Now, obviously, we can discuss a lot of other things related to that. Maybe my opinion will change once we get down into details, but on the surface, it's something that I might strongly consider.
Thank you, Mrs. Reimer.
I agree with Matt. I think that having a Director of Facilities would benefit the school district. It may cost a little bit more, but it's also, may save us in the long run. There could be hiccups with certain projects. The first one that comes to my mind is the swimming pool in the high school. It could have been maybe that if we had a Facilities Director, he would be, he would be the one that would have been there to make sure that things were tested and that the pool would have been open sooner, and maybe not have been closed like it was. So I think making sure that everything went smoothly, you need to have somebody at the helm to take care of it, so I'm strongly for it.
Mr. McCancy?
It's my opinion that this position needs to be filled. I think currently, we're the only district in the county that doesn't have a Facilities Director. This was a position that we've had in the past, that was absorbed into the Deputy's position, I believe, and dispersed through personnel that were brought along to augment and aid the Deputy. I think that it's important, because we have a lot of capital projects coming up, and millions of dollars are going to be spent, and we need somebody to streamline that process that knows what they're looking at, knows how to deal with consultants and labor unions and such, and if we don't have a Director of Facilities, these things could be handled improperly and cost the district more money. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling.
Yeah, I don't think I need a microphone. I think this is something that we have to do more homework on. I wouldn't say that I'm not in favor of it. I think there's questions as to some maybe executive issues here that I can't discuss, that I'd like to look into, get some homework done. We do have quite extensive construction coming up, and I think it is important that it's viewed right from the beginning, our costs be addressed right from the beginning. So I think if we do some background homework, it's probably a position that I would support.
Mr. Shapiro?
I'm not gonna bump the four people who spoke before me. I also agree that it's a position that we need. We have to take a look at the pluses and minuses in terms of fiscal responsibility. And if we can figure out a way where it's not going to, you know, cost an incredible amount of more money than what we're willing to have, that's a good thing. We want to have the right person. And as Tommy said, there's a lot that we have to take a look at, but it's definitely someone who would help us out, not just for the construction, but for just the everyday stuff that comes up with eight buildings, including this one, and everything else that goes on. We really need someone who can be the person, the go-to person. So after we do the homework that we're gonna need to do, I think we'll make the right decision for the district, and then we'll be in great shape. Not that we're not in great shape, but we can be in better shape.
Thank you, Mr. McCancy.
Basically, as a new Board member, we had the opportunity of touring the buildings, and it was pointed out to us that there are a number of buildings that need certain repairs that are going to be very costly. You have so many buildings, and those buildings aren't invested. You put so much money into them, and I think now you really have to try to keep up with everything. And a Director of Facilities is really the person who is the point person, who has the experience. You know, the district really has to be, you know, it can't be penny wise and pound foolish here. We need, I think, someone to really take over that position, its position, as I think Angus has said, that every other district has. And, you know, you might want to save a couple of dollars by not filling those positions, but then there is a lack of what is going on in the buildings and repairs and so forth. So I'm definitely in favor of a Facilities Director.
Thank you, Mr. McCancy. Dr. Adams, agree with that? Do you have an opportunity as well?
I guess I respectfully disagree with the entire Board and their position on this. Having intimately worked with the Facilities folks, and as you heard, presentation tonight with Teresa, and John Palm stood up and spoke pretty articulately about the process that we go through with the vestibules and any of the construction, and Jimmy spoke a little bit about what goes on in security and some other issues or areas. I think we have a great team with those two and with Anthony Kachera, albeit he's here part-time. In the previous district in Clarkstown, he was Deputy Superintendent, and under him, he was responsible for all capital projects, SED submissions, working with architects and with engineers. John works with the architect and engineer, and John and Jimmy both work with a lot of our vendors that when they are constructing whatever they are, John's there, Jimmy's there to make sure that the interests of the school district and the interests of our taxpayers are being protected. So I think that they do a really, really great job. They're knowledgeable, they're experienced, and they're competent in what they do. Are there mistakes sometimes? Of course. But will having an additional administrative position be what prevents any mistakes? I disagree. I think that we have an outstanding team as it is. If we were to lose any of those three, then I would reserve the right to say, hey, we need to do it differently. But Jimmy and John, they're the leaders when it comes to the implementation. Anthony oversees it, and so I respectfully would disagree with the Board's position on this.
Okay. So my personal impression was different, that we were having these conversations that would lead up to a decision. I won't be able to respond to your comments regarding specific employees, because we're not supposed to, but huge respect and appreciation to all our employees who currently perform the work. The idea of creating or returning the position, if that's a possibility, of the Board deciding on that, together with the Administration, would be to provide more central office support for the communication between our current staff and yourself as Superintendent, to pretty much support the Superintendent, because that position, Director of Facilities, is someone who reports directly to the Superintendent on behalf of the rest of the Buildings and Grounds team. The Buildings and Grounds team offered us a great tour this summer that is offered to all Board members, all the new, or returning, and new I should say, annually, and required by the Board of Education to do this walk-through, and shared with us very, very useful information prior and during the walk, basically enlightening us that there are so many projects coming through the pikes, and, you know, shared a report that states, for example, Cherry Lane Elementary is gonna need fire alarm and emergency lighting upgrades, and needs a roof replacement. Our Beconner needs a front vestibule, which we addressed a little bit earlier today, which has been already Board-approved. Fire alarm, emergency lighting upgrades. The Hillburn Building needs a new roof replacement, some foundation repairs, and a generator, which has been approved by the Board of Ed back in 2017. The Montebello Elementary needs fire alarm, emergency lighting upgrades, electric upgrades as well. The Spotsburg Elementary needs a transformer replacement, fire alarm, emergency lighting upgrades. The Viola Elementary needs front vestibule, another major project we discussed today, Board-approved in 2018, fire alarm, emergency lighting upgrades. Suffolk Middle School needs a generator, also approved in 2017. The Stadium Leacher Project, fire alarm upgrades, emergency building facade repairs. This is, I believe, is an urgent project that needs to be started right away. The building facade repairs and replacement Phase 1 and 2. Also needs a roof replacement and resurfacing of the track. We've replaced the, as a district, the turf fields, we're all aware of that. Now, the track around the fields needs replacement. The Suffolk High School needs a generator, also approved in 2017, a front vestibule approved in 2018. The gym roof needs replacement, the wrestling room roof needs replacement, electrical distribution upgrades, fire alarm, emergency lighting upgrades. Now, these are only examples of what needs major projects, let alone... Now, these are only examples of what needs major projects, let alone the day-to-day maintenance, things that break, things, you know, I'm not an expert and I can't pretend to be, but we know what maintaining eight major buildings is going to bring. Some of it surprising and some of it predictable. We have an incredible team, incredible, incredible team. In fact, you know, I can't share it further, but we have great trust in the current team, and we've discussed things to that effect that I can't get into. But creating the position would create that liaison that we haven't had, just to support the superintendent, getting the information, not taking them off the job, off the work in the field to report and to also orchestrate amongst different buildings that have different needs at the same time. So it is definitely a discussion I think we should continue to have. Dr. Adams was going to provide some financial input regarding the cost. We've got some preliminary figures. We've been discussing this for quite some time, but on a personnel level, executively, and board members felt we need to bring the discussion in public for further information. Also, Dr. Adams, this is a general question, so it can be public. We don't need to recreate the position, the position, we don't need to, it's still existing, correct? Was that the information you got back?
Yes.
The position still exists?
Yes.
Because it is a civil service position, so that we don't need to take action. We also don't need to take a vote to oppose the position, just a discussion as we're doing now, that has been verified, but these discussions need to continue in terms of the actual numbers. And now I'm going to give everyone a second opportunity to say something. Mr. Kern.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Neither do I.
I just think that if the numbers are right, it makes sense that we bring somebody to oversee things, and that could be from within, without, whichever. It just, I think that we need another layer of supervision there, which wasn't there prior and should be there now.
Mr. Donlin.
I would just like to get the information that we requested and be able to go from there.
Mr. Shapiro.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Kern.
It's an investment. I think we should go forward with it.
And as part of the information we're looking at, that Mr. Donlin's alluding to, we all know that it may, you know, we have preliminary figures, but we could have other savings in terms of possible consulting fees that we might be incurring, as well as, you know, it depends on what level of salary the person is coming in and how much experience they have, and these are all items that the administration will be looking into. And we collaborate and work together, figure that out. Your position today surprised me a little bit. Thank you. So that concludes our discussion regarding Director of Facilities. At this time, I would like to invite public for public participation, second segment regarding non-agenda items. Seeing there are none? None? Yes?
Do you want to talk?
Now is the time.
Isn't there somebody that has a name to search for that person to hire?
Okay, can you state your name, please?
My name is Benny Benney, P-E-R-S-I-C-H-T-T-U-I.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Benny, B-E-N-N-Y, P-E-R-S-I-C-H-T-T-U-I.
And the question?
The question is, isn't Dr. Adams appointed to do that job?
Yes, we, the board...
Hasn't he done it all these years for us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All supervisors that's come before him and now.
I misunderstood the question. I thought you meant advertising the jobs. Nothing will be advertised or no action will be taken unless it's recommended by the superintendent.
So then it's my question, who's got the authority to hire that man if he finds him taking it?
Once the superintendent makes a recommendation to the Board of Education, the Board of Education is not allowed, is then allowed to act on it. So it has to be by superintendent recommendation. That's how the policy reads and the law. So the superintendent would come with a recommendation to the Board of Education, and the board can vote yes or no. That's how it works.
Is he still the man who hired that man?
Absolutely, yes. With board approval. That's how it works.
How come the board hasn't approved it? I thought that he was the man who fired, and that's his job.
Right, but the law requires...
Does he legally mean his rights? Why hire that person?
By making a...
Does he legally mean his rights?
I'm going to allow Dr. Adams to go.
In terms of any position in the district, except for my position, I make a recommendation to the board in terms of teachers, custodians, Director of Facilities, Assistant Superhead for Human Resources, for all those positions, I have to make the recommendation to the board, and then the board can choose to accept the recommendation or not. It's not them making a recommendation to me about a particular person. I make the recommendation to them.
That's what it sounds like. That's what it sounds like.
The discussion is whether to have the position or not, not to who to hire. The discussion is whether, yeah, so the board is entitled to having discussions, whether to add a position to the district staff or not. Then the recommendation comes from the superintendent, and we're obviously having these conversations to take his input. He would have to recommend. You're very welcome. Thank you. I'm sure you understand, but thanks for asking the question. Any further comments? Seeing that there are no further comments, we will close this segment. Closing remarks for the superintendent of schools.
I think Emily, Second Emily Senior, she's already left, but she was concerned about having a drill during the unit lunch, which I think we all are a little concerned about that because our students are all over the building. There will be a drill that comes up this fall in that regard. I attended a drill at the middle school, and they had, it was the second lunch that they evacuated. The kids and staff did a really fantastic job. Our alarm bells, when it said time for them to come in, every, you know, we'd start to come in, then they'd go off, they'd come in, they'd go off. So we got that worked out, but in terms of the evacuation itself, the kids did a remarkable job, and so did the staff. I think it was probably well orchestrated, but we'll have a, you know, because it went fairly well, they debriefed, we'll have one that's a surprise evacuation. But I'm really interested to see one at the high school. So we are working on that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. At this time, the chair would like to entertain a motion to adjourn back into executive session to continue with the purposes previously stated at the beginning of today's meeting. Motion? Mr. McCannsey, second. Ms. Reamer, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstains? Unanimous. Thank you.